Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Goh.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of November 17th, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Goh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll have City Manager Christian Clegg offer the invocation. Following the invocation, Councilmember Smith will lead us in the pledge. Would you all please stand?
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we are thankful for our many blessings. We're thankful to be gathered together this evening to do the work of this city. We're thankful for the providence of Bakersfield, and we're thankful to have thy guidance. We pray continued guidance in being able to govern, to make important decisions. We ask thy blessings upon this council, upon those that serve this community, and in particular upon this community. We ask that thy Spirit be with us in making decisions and in pursuing thy will and what is right for this community. And again, we give thanks for the assistance and goodwill of the many who serve here and the many who do good in this community, and that it is a community of faith. And we give these thanks in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Salute. Let.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Here are a few -- oh, we'll wait until everyone is seated. Well, good evening and welcome. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons and as a courtesy to others. No signs are allowed in the chambers or in the lobby. Applause is allowed only during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council on July 14th, 2021. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chamber being cleared. Madam Clerk, next item.
Public statements.
Thank you. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out the public speaker card and give it to the city clerk. Statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here on Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 9A through B, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, however, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Again, please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements going off-topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience surpassing the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public statements?
Mayor Goh, we've received two public speaker cards, both regarding separate subjects. The first public speaker this evening is Jacqueline Aguilar regarding Item 11B, TCC
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Staff. My name is Jacqueline Aguilar, Public Affairs Associate at TDAH Associates. We work on economic and community development projects. We have participated in the community meetings that the city has held and are here today to express our support for the transformative Climate Communities Program, referred to as TCC. As we have successfully seen TCC-funded projects in other cities, we encourage you to consider PSVS and Economic Development Funds to leverage the proposed TCC projects. That will make the application for these TCC projects much more competitive, which will result in an increase in the amount of investments that can be made in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Next public speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello again. Good evening, Council. Thank you for taking the time. Good evening again. My name is Margarito Michael Espinoza. I am a facility worker with the City of Bakersfield for about three years now, and been doing public service for probably over 20 years of my life. I'm also a proud union member of our SEIU 521. I'm here tonight to address a crisis that I'm sure we're all aware of. Retention of our blue-collar team is impacting how fast we can respond in keeping our city clean, and at the same time, it feels like we're not being valued for the critical services that we provide for our city and our communities. I talk to my coworkers, and it's consistent across our bargaining unit that we can't retain the quality workers that the taxpayers deserve. Even the temp workers in my facilities department can't see the value in staying long enough to learn the ropes and understand how important and crucial we are to this community. For the veteran workers that do stay, we stay because we know our work makes a real difference in everyday lives in this city. We keep the city clean. We work in various departments: sanitation, general services, public works, streets, lines and stripes. The list goes on and on. We don't live in the shadows. We never had the chance to work from home. We showed up from day one of this health crisis, and right now, we feel like we're not valued for the city services that we often take for granted. Without us, the city will look like a wasteland. I ask this council, I plead with this council and our city management, on behalf of those that were able to make it tonight, and the rest that are not here, but I know their spirits are, I ask to provide our workforce the same level of respect and dignity as the safety team receives under our employer. We ask this council to honor our services that keep our city beautiful and to provide parity in essential bonus pay because we never stopped keeping our city safe and clean. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Espinoza. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 8A through 8AV for approval. A staff memorandum was provided for Item 8A, transmitting the minutes for the November 3rd, 2021, regular meetings. Also, a staff memorandum was provided for Item 8AK, requesting the item be pulled from the agenda as the selected vendor is no longer able to provide vehicles at the bid price. An additional staff memorandum was provided for Item 8T, transmitting correspondence received.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I make a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items 8A through 8V, with the exception of Items C and Item T.
Thank you. You have a motion. Please cast your votes. Thank you. And now, Item C, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I understand that the attorney has some comments to make on Item C.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Madam Clerk, I think I have a, I know I have a PowerPoint. If you could put that up, I would appreciate it. Thank you. So Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, what tonight's agenda is asking you to do is actually to look at your current code, which is Chapter 2.04. The Vice Mayor asked that my office look at this section and provide suggestions for updating it and possibly streamlining it. And what you see in front of you tonight on that slide, that is the table of contents of Chapter 2.04, and you can see that it has 15 sections to it. And what we are asking you to do tonight is to consider repealing a majority of it, actually all but three of the items, and to make a few amendments. And then the items that we're asking that you repeal, I'm asking that you then put into a resolution that I will explain in just a second. Going through some of the brief amendments, you can see in 2.04.0110, just to kind of make some capital letters, and then in 020 to clearly indicate to the public that the City Council is a legislative body and subject to the Brown Act. Under 030, I think it's important that we outline again to the public that we are going to adopt some rules of procedure regarding how to conduct council meetings, and that we are going to stick to that policy in applicable state and local laws. And again, that council policy will be in the form, hopefully, of a resolution. The last amendment would be to 2.04.050 to clarify again disruption. We want to outline what constitutes disruption. Your council has already done that, if you recall, earlier this year in July of 2021 through a resolution. And again, hopefully, this new resolution that you will pass will go into a little bit more depth. The second part of what we're asking you to do tonight, after you have first reading of the ordinance repealing most of those sections, is to then adopt a resolution which will establish guidelines for how to conduct city council meetings. And again, it's going to incorporate a majority of those repealed sections that I showed you on the first slide under 2.04. For example, we will have the order of the agenda in this resolution. It will outline how to conduct the consent calendar, how to conduct the consent calendar public hearing, and how to actually conduct hearings. We'll also clarify the duties of the mayor or the presiding officer. The only substantive change to the resolution will be actually in the handling and in the ordering of public statements. And what do I mean by that? Right now, as you know, and for years, as long as I've been here, an individual can come to the microphone, they have three minutes a person, 15 minutes a topic. Topic is actually in your code, and the word "topic" is very difficult to define. And we are only, the only city actually in the top 10 cities in California that do it that way. The other nine cities in the state of California, top 10, they actually divide it up between agenda items or non-agenda items, and that's what we're asking you to consider tonight. And so the way the resolution is currently drafted, and again, it's in your packet, is that, beginning in January of 2022, if a member of the community wishes to come forward and speak on an agenda item, they would have one minute a person, 15 minutes per agenda item, with the note that the consent calendar, so tonight you had Consent Calendars A through AV as invictor, the entire consent calendar is one, is one agenda item. And so again, they would have one minute per person, 15 minutes per agenda item. Then there would be non-agenda items. And so if someone were here and they wanted to speak on a non-agenda item, they wanted to talk about a bake sale that they were having in the City of Bakersfield, they would have one minute, and the total of all of those individuals that are coming forward on non-agenda items would be 15 minutes. Again, I think it's very important, and the resolution would note this, that the non-agenda item still needs to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. So if I wanted to come in and tell you that I'm having a bake sale in southwest Bakersfield, that's fine. It's within the city limits. But if I wanted to come in and tell you that I was having a bake sale in Europe, that is not within the purview of the city council. And so again, that's a non-agenda item that was not, would not be in the purview, and we would encourage, again, the mayor as the chair to say that that would not, that would not be allowed. Individuals would have to identify when they come forward whether they wanted to speak on an agenda item or on a non-agenda item. If they did not feel comfortable doing that, then they would be placed in the non-agenda Again, of the top cities, top 10 cities in California, only the City of Bakersfield currently conducts public statements based upon topics. And so that would be a reason, again, to update, as the Vice Mayor requested, and streamline the code as well as the resolution. There are some similar examples. In Los Angeles, they have one minute per speaker. There is no cap on an agenda item. There is a 10-minute cap for non-agenda comments. In Long Beach, it's three minutes per speaker. It doesn't matter whether it's an agenda item or a non-agenda item, and they drop that down to 90 seconds if there's 10 or more speakers. And in Oakland, if you're there to speak on a non-agenda item, you have one to three minutes. It's at the discretion of the chair with a 15-minute cap, and there's a two-minute cap if you're there on an agenda item, and that also can be reduced to one minute by the chair. So again, tonight, we're asking for a motion to conduct first reading of the ordinance, amending Chapter 2.04 as I've outlined herein, and then adopting the resolution establishing the council policy for conducting the city council meetings effective December 31, 2021. I would like to add two things. One, if you are not comfortable with the one-minute time limit and you wish to, you wish to make it 90 seconds, or you wish to make it two minutes, simply incorporate that into your motion, please, and we can make that, we can make that modification. Secondly, the reason we felt it was important to make this effective at the end of the year is that gives staff approximately 45 days to educate the public that the public statement portion of your agenda is changing, effective in January. As you know, I personally think that this council has been very accessible to the community in all the years that I've been here. Not only do you make yourselves available personally and publicly to people when they call to meet, but we've always accepted letters, we've always accepted emails, and we've always, the clerk has always accepted phone calls and been able to relay those messages to you. So I think what you're considering here tonight is very appropriate, but nevertheless, if there is a change, we would like to notify the public clearly, do that through social media, through our internet, and we'll work with the clerk's office to make sure that those changes are made and the public is notified when the agenda packet goes out. So with that, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. You know, I've had some conversations, and there are, there are people that prefer the one minute, but there are many concerns about going from three minutes to one minute. So I move staff's recommendation, with the exception of agenda items and non-agenda items, be moved to two minutes.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that change. When I, when I read it, I was kind of surprised at the one minute, and I'm chairman of Kern Cog, and we use two minutes, and I've seen many people use two minutes, and I, the mistress Espinoza that spoke tonight, I looked and he used two and a half minutes, and he spoke for 20 or 30 people that were here, and I just feel that the two minutes is more appropriate. So I appreciate that change. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Freeman.
You.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was interested, I appreciate you showing us what other jurisdictions do. One to two minutes seem to be the norm. We're sort of way out on the extreme, and I noticed tonight, the first speaker took 54 seconds and was straight to the point and was very effective by being, getting the point. The second speaker only took slightly over two minutes. So, and I think that one could have been shortened up. So I think two minutes is a reasonable amount of time. I personally think we could do one minute, but I understand lots of colleagues aren't a sort of, I don't know, I'm always one who wants to get something done, and maybe I'm kind of an impatient person, so I recognize that. But I do think the, the two minutes is a, is a good compromise, and I'd be very supportive of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
I was one of those. I want to make sure that the public understands that we do want to hear your concerns. That's why we're here, to serve you, but I am willing to compromise with my colleagues. And again, the speakers tonight kind of played this out because they were very to the point. So we do want to hear your concerns. One thing this does do by limiting the time from three minutes to two minutes is that there's going to be more people that will have the opportunity to speak, whereas before we had a maximum of five speakers. So this does open the floor up to more people to be able to share what's on their heart and their concerns. But I just want to reiterate that we do want to hear what our constituents are concerned about, and we are here to listen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank the Vice Mayor for his motion and meeting us with a compromise. I too was concerned about reducing our times to one minute per person, but I think the two minutes is reasonable for all the aforementioned rationale. I did have a couple of questions, though, regarding this. So with the non-agenda items, you know, I know that in other communities, those public comments are somewhere else on the agenda prior. I mean, the reason why we have public comments at the beginning of the agenda is so that we can hear from the public prior to making decisions on agendized items. For non-agendized topics, do we have to codify where that sits on the agenda, or can we move it to the end of the meeting? Can you speak to that?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, good question. Right now, I have left it under public statements, and so nothing on the agenda will, will change. It'll be public statements, agenda items, and the non-agenda items. I left it that way because, first of all, I think it's appropriate to do that when you're transitioning into a new way of making those public statements, and, and I think that makes sense from a legal perspective. The resolution, however, allows the chair to move that item to the end if, if she feels that it would be a more efficient way of conducting the business. So we have that flexibility, and that was another reason why the Vice Mayor had suggested that this type of activity, this type of conduct, go in a resolution as opposed to the code. It's a much easier, it provides us with more flexibility to be able to change and pivot.
I see. Okay, thank you. And the other thing I'd note, you know, the non-agenda items, the limit is 15 minutes. And previously, we hadn't had a limit on non-agenda items. However, we also have a earlier meeting, right, a 3:30 meeting, which is available for people, and that's a, that's a 15-minute cap at each meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm comfortable with the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Jenny, thank you for taking the time to look through that and help us try to understand and be prepared for the changing circumstances. I know that there's some state legislation that we are aware of that could potentially open us up to comments via online or by phone call. So I was hoping that you could speak to that and kind of speak to the need to actually revamp this system.
Certainly. Mayor, Councilmember Arias, as many of you may remember, it was, at one time, it was legislation pending before the governor, I think it was SB 339, that would have required, I think, cities over a certain size, I want to say 250,000 people, to actually provide the technology to allow people from all over the world to be able to zoom in or use the phone or use whatever technology you had in order to speak on an item on the agenda. And so that, that was definitely a thought when the city attorney's office went through the code, but thankfully, the governor did not sign that piece of legislation, but I don't think we've seen the end of it, and there may be some type of hybrid that comes back. So I do, again, think that this was prudent for the council to pivot and take it out of the code, put it in a resolution, and get our community used to coming in, speaking on topic, and moving on.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for covering that. You know, if I'm speaking, if I can, just for a moment, I want to speak to, you know, all the residents, the hard-working families of this community who, you know, and that are in our growing city, right? We're, you know, based on new numbers at 403,000 people in the City of Bakersfield alone, and by all measures, we're going to continue to grow. And I think that, you know, as we continue to grow, I think we must frankly increase accessibility and capacity for us to receive public comment and whatever kinds of remarks that our constituents, whether we like them or not, for them to come and share those items with us. And so one of the concerns that I have with this piece of policy is, there have been a number of times at the budget meeting and otherwise where we've actually reached the 15-minute limit per topic. And there have been situations where, you know, residents, hard-working individuals have come with an expectation that, you know, they would have their opportunity to voice their opinion and speak to this council, their representative body. And I think that by reducing it down to two minutes per person, I think that makes sense. I think, you know, you can reasonably get your point across, you can share a story. I, I think that makes sense. My issue is with the 15-minute limit per topic, and so I would actually like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendations, that we move it from one minute to two minutes per person for non-agenda items and agenda items, but then also expand the 15-minute limit per topic for both to 20 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with my colleagues. I think two minutes is going to be sufficient, but I also agree with Eric. I think we should go to 20 minutes, too, to allow a little more flexibility for speakers to come and express whatever they want to express through this council. Again, those opinions are welcomed, and we want to hear them, and adding just a few more minutes, I think, is reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other requests, so we have the second motion, and that's the one that was made by Councilmember Arias. You have a motion. Having a little technology issue, and it's being resolved, hopefully, right now.
Mayor Goh, I will conduct a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
No.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Parlier.
Aye.
Motion is approved. With Councilmembers, with Vice Mayor Weir and Councilmember Freeman, voting no.
Thank you. And the next item now is T. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a proposed bike path going through a canal area, which to me seems like it's going to be the most, the next Kern River. to me seems like it's going to be the most, the next Kern River problem with homeless and other people being attracted to that. But I also want to know how this affects the Equestrian Trail out there, because it seems like we are obliterating the Equestrian Trails for the topic of bicycle. And it seems like there's a way they got to be able to live together. So, what does this do to the Equestrian Trail?
Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor. I'll ask Stu Patterson if he could speak to that item.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Through the mayor, the only section I'm aware of where there is a shared section, and I don't have a map or anything that I can show you, so I'll try to describe it, is where the proposed paved trail will be parallel with the Equestrian or the designated, what has been accepted as the designated Equestrian Trail, is a section right east of Coffee Road between what we've called the sand plug, which is that we're just upstream of the bridge over the river at Coffee Road. From there, over to the outfall of the Friant Kern Canal, I don't know the distance. It's probably in the neighborhood of several hundred feet, maybe 600 or 700 feet. We're constructing a bridge over the outfall that has always been designated as a shared bridge, so it'll be used by both the multipurpose trail and the Equestrian groups, which we have had some discussions at the counter in the department with the Equestrian folks. And they were in favor of that because currently, if there's water in the river, they can't cross over and continue on the north side. So, the bridge is a benefit for both the multi-use trail and Equestrians. Just to the west of that, along the pumping station for the Cross Valley Canal and the Arvin Edison Canal, right now is a 20-to-30-foot-wide dirt road that is anticipated to have 12 feet of a paved multi-use trail, and the remainder, about 20 feet, would be available for Equestrians. The Equestrians, horses would have to cross the trail at one point in order to continue on, while cyclists would continue to tie into the existing Kern River Trail. I know that's kind of a long explanation, and hopefully it helped because, like I said, I don't have a map to show you.
And so, we're going to be having electric bicycles trailing right beside the Equestrians?
The bikes that would be allowed would be the same bikes, a Class 1 or 2 e-bike or bicycle would be allowed. Class 3 bikes would not be allowed.
Okay. Well, thank you for your explanation. I'm not going to make a motion.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I am excited about this project. I think it's consistent with council goals. We passed a bicycle transportation plan in 2013 that this is consistent with. We have also passed requests for grants that we have been granted to ready to build it. And I think that there is existing places where Equestrians and bicycles already cross, and people can get along. And so, I think it's a great project, and I'm excited. So, I will make the motion for staff's recommendation.
I don't see any requests to speak. So, you have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved. With Vice Mayor Weir, voting no.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar public hearings 9A through 9B for approval.
Thank you. It's now time for the consent calendar hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items under consent calendar hearing in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. And at this time, I will open consent calendar public hearing items 9A through B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that the hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, only remove the matter from consent calendar hearings. I don't see any. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar hearings? Seeing none, at this time, consent calendar public hearing items 9A through B is closed. Vice Mayor?
Move staff's recommendation.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 11A, under Reports, presentation by Moss Adams to review the City of Bakersfield Enterprise Risk Assessment results.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to provide some context for what a risk assessment is. And I know council is well aware of this, but for our viewing public, the city asked for this assessment. It's like getting a checkup from your doctor, an opportunity to really take a look at where we have risk in our organization, and where are some areas where we're performing well and some areas where we could probably perform a little bit better. And what this does is it helps us to both have some of the specifics for that, and most importantly, to prioritize where would we focus some of our improvement efforts. Going forward, we've talked quite a bit about having process improvements and policy development and performance measurements, and focusing on becoming a modernized, sophisticated organization in some areas as the community continues to grow. And we're facing more complicated urban challenges. So, this risk assessment looks at a number of categories and helps the city see some areas where we can really prioritize some of those internal process improvement efforts. So, we conducted an RFP and selected Moss Adams to do that assessment. It's been conducted over the last six months, and the results are in. And so, we'll share a summary of that here tonight briefly. The report in its entirety is available to the public, and it's going to be a guide for helping staff moving forward. With that, I'll turn it over to Mark Sternke and Colleen Rosillas from Moss Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Mark Sternke from Moss Adams, Mayor Go, Vice Mayor Weir, and City Councilmember. It was a pleasure to have you, the opportunity to share this with you. Few opening comments. One is, thank you to the council for participating, from management to support. We request a lot of information. You see, it's a pretty robust report, and that's based on a lot of information that we ask of the city. So, thanks for that cooperation. It is a comprehensive assessment. It's not just, you might see in the marketplace risk assessments where you get what they call a heat map, which is kind of that color-coded chart in the executive summary. What it's meant is to give you the context of information about how the city's actually operating, so that you can have a better understanding. And as Christian said, really use this information to help prioritize, what do we want to work on moving forward? And it should be viewed as, these are opportunities for improvement. There's no shame on you, something's a high risk, that's terrible, or anything like that. It's, these are your opportunities for improvement, and you should leverage the information to figure out, how do you apply your efforts, your dollars, moving forward to work to enhance, you know, the various areas of the city, and really just to help you do what you do better. The last comment is, what Christian mentioned is exactly the right way to use the information, which is to help prioritize. And you have limited opportunity, resources, dollars to work on things. But if you view it as, let's chip away at things over time, we can't address everything at once, then that's a very prudent way. It's a best practice, what you're doing, and we hope you make good use of the information. And Colleen's going to give you a high-level overview of the results. So, thank you.
Welcome, Colleen. You might lower your mic just a little. Thank you.
Short people problems. Hi, everyone. Colleen Rosillas from Moss Adams. Great to be here tonight. If you wouldn't mind advancing forward two slides for me. Or, yeah, thank you. Even better. Thanks. All right. So, as Christian and Mark mentioned, we were retained to conduct an enterprise risk assessment. And we assessed the city on broadly 16 different areas of risk. We focused on opportunities to reduce risk, improve internal controls, improve efficiency and effectiveness. We also did a deep dive into controls and policies and procedures. Our focus was on identifying opportunities for improvement and providing recommendations to align better with best practices. Our work was performed under AICPA consultancy standards. We also aligned the work to enterprise risk management standards that were identified by COSO. So, aligned with, very strongly with industry best practices here. This is a point-in-time assessment. We did this work primarily this summer and fall. During our assessment, we interviewed all of you, as well as department directors and many folks across the city. We conducted quite a bit of data analysis, as well as a survey of city staff. We did quite a bit of work to identify our risk levels and trajectories and impact and all of those, as well as worked with city staff to verify our facts, to make sure we were on the right track and that everything in the report was correct. Our assessment framework, as you'll see throughout the report, we do provide an overall risk rating of low to high. Within that risk rating, we rate both the city's level of preparedness for each potential risk impact, as well as the impact to the city, the likelihood of an event occurring, what the trajectory the city is on with respect to that risk, any potential strategies that we have recommended for the city to address that risk, and then residual risk. And the residual risk is really important for all of you in terms of the steps that the city can take, in terms of prioritizing what we're going to do moving forward to reduce our risk, to improve our performance. There are some areas in which we're going to have higher levels of residual risk, just based on the business that we're in and the world that we operate in. And there are some areas in which we're able to reduce our risk quite a bit, depending on the opportunities that we have in front of us. So, within our report, you'll see in every section, a summary of each level that shows each of those risk areas, as well as those risk mitigation activities. Those activities can be discrete projects, they can be broader policy or strategy initiatives. They can also be things that we can just undertake as a city as a whole, kind of longer term. And in each section, we also have narrative that describes that risk condition. At a very high level, you know, there are opportunities across the city, in every organization, to perform more effectively and reduce risk. Council sets the policy direction and the city's goals, and then management decides how, right, and implements them. So, broadly, as Christian mentioned, we identified that theme of really leveling up operations, this idea of making sure that we're aligning with best practice, making sure that we have our policies and procedures documented and our systems in place to really serve the community, better meet community needs. And so, on this slide, we have a kind of our key takeaways here, some things that will really help us to move forward. For all of you, it's really establishing those clear outcomes and policy direction with respect to senior management, really getting into alignment with things like capital planning and programming, making sure that we have staff capacity to deliver on the work. And then for everyone on the team, it's really getting in line with our procedures, our processes, making sure that our internal controls are in alignment, so that we can deliver service to the community. A couple of commendations that we want to point out. So, you've got a reserve fund that is in alignment with best practice, which is great. You're in a good financial position, and you have no general obligation debt. We can't say that for very many of our clients, especially in California, so great job. You also have a very good, effective governance environment here. We know that you have a very effective policy governance model with good decision-making, and that you do a good job honoring the council-staff partnership. I mean, that's really important. We also noted that you're under, in the process of updating many of your significant plans. And so, that's really going to set you up for a very strong future in terms of really implementing and setting up the community for success, as well as that you're just about to undertake updating the city's enterprise financial and human resources system, the ERP. And that is really a huge opportunity for the city to take that step back and think, do we have to do business as usual, or can we streamline our processes? Can we provide more innovative service delivery and meet the community where they are with today's technology? It's also a great opportunity to improve collaboration across departments, interoperability between systems, as well as compliance. And given all the state and federal money that's coming through, compliance is particularly important. So, on to our detailed results. So, we rated the city high-risk in two categories. The first is external environment. This makes you similar to every single city in California right now. We are in the middle of a global pandemic. We continue to struggle responding to homelessness, affordable housing, state regulations, having to respond to extreme weather, many challenges that are out of the control of the city, that are multi-jurisdictional, that require us to be prepared, that we cannot control. This is an area where, even if we do everything that we can, our residual risk is still quite high. But it just controls quite a bit about what we do at this point. And so, we just have to understand that we have to be prepared and have our emergency preparedness plans in place, and understand that our staff have to be ready in order to respond if an event were to occur. The other area that we want to highlight here is information technology. If the last two years has taught us anything, it's that our information technology is our infrastructure, and it's really important to invest in it. The city has, over the past several decades, been very limited in terms of revenue, and the ability to keep up with modern technology has been a challenge. So, with the implementation of the ERP in the future, that will be very important, to really be able to level up again with those processes and systems. It's also important to think about cybersecurity here and the city's vulnerability. Cities are very vulnerable to cyber attacks because of all of the data that you have available to you. In this category, we have a number of areas that are really interrelated, really thinking about alignment here around the identifying the community's desired level of service, determining what the resources that we need and the tools that we need to deliver on that level of service, documenting our policies and procedures, and streamlining those processes. That covers quite a few of these categories. I wanted to highlight human capital and resources and management and leadership. People are calling it the Great Resignation right now. We've got a lot of turnover. In local government, we're seeing this kind of across the board, that there are just plain old more jobs than people, and there's a lot of competition. We also know that the city has operated with less staffing and lower compensation than comparable cities. And so, that's been more of a challenge in terms of recruiting and retaining compared to other cities. So, really thinking about investing in that. And we know that you're undertaking a compensation study coming up, and so that will be important to reduce your risk in that area. Also important to think about asset management and your capital program, like technology. That's something, especially for general funded assets, that all governments are struggling with, being able to invest in over time. And so, while we have Measure N funds, ARPA dollars, and the new federal infrastructure package, we still have quite a bit of infrastructure need across all assets. And so, making sure that we have a handle on what our deferred maintenance needs are, and then really being able to program and prioritize. And then finally, I'd like to highlight public safety. So, we have a couple of areas here within police and fire and code enforcement, thinking about our assets. So, making sure that our fire stations, apparatus, as well as police stations, because they're used so much, the community has grown so much, really keeping up with the demand there for the service. And then, police. So, nationwide, we've had over the last decade, decline in interest in policing. And so, it's been a real challenge to recruit new police officers, as well as an acceleration in retirements. And so, we're seeing a lot of pressure on police departments everywhere to be able to recruit and retain. You also have an ambitious goal to hire quite a few new police officers. And so, HR in your police department has been working very hard to set up the infrastructure to be able to do that over the past year and a half. In addition to that, your recent settlement agreement with the Department of Justice, being able to implement those recommendations, and really, again, like we've been talking about, identifying your community expectations for service, and then being able to staff accordingly to deliver. Within your moderate risk categories, these are all very much Within your moderate risk categories, these are all very much places where the city is performing, you know, pretty similar to other cities. There are opportunities to improve with respect to management in terms of, let's all get aligned and make some improvements, again, in terms of our policies and procedures, making sure our systems are in place. And then we have a couple of areas where you are at lower risk. We just wanted to point out with respect to ethics, the city has a really strong operating environment with very dedicated employees. We do recommend instituting a whistleblower hotline and training for all staff, so that staff know where to report incidences of wrongdoing, that we have policies and procedures in place for that, and that there is a process to handle those. And then with respect to governance, I touched on that earlier, and good practices. We know that your charter is quite old and hasn't really been updated. Those, this is a good opportunity for you to also think about updating your charter, so that you can align that with contemporary business practices, and again, meet your, the needs of your current community. So with that, I will stop talking at you and let you answer, or ask me any questions.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your work. It's, gives us opportunities for improvement, like you say. Appreciate it. I just wanted to ask, I remember when I was reading it, the response from the employees, 14% or something, is that exceptionally low, average? Where's that land? And how's that really affect how you see the responses?
Yeah, so we did get responses from every department. It is a low response rate. It's about average for right now. Employees are pretty surveyed out right now because of COVID, because of everything else that's been going on. We've just been getting lower response rates on surveys. And so I would say that while it's not ideal, it is the survey results that we've got.
But you feel that you still landed in the right place?
Yeah, and we don't, we use the survey results really to get a sense for where we feel employees are, but we don't use them as part of the calculation of our risk rating. Really what it does is help us to understand, are there areas where there are big disconnects between staff and management compared to our interviews? Are there areas that we use lots of open-ended comments, so we gather lots of information there, and then we can use those comments to flag and bring up areas to management as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other colleagues?
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion?
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Mark and Colleen, thank you very much for your efforts to enable us to make data-driven decisions. Thank you. Next item, please.
Reports item 11B, status report on transformative climate communities plan.
Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've been talking about transformative climate communities, or TCC, for some time at the city. What is before you tonight is a report, because there's not a specific action being requested of council. This is an update as to where we're at in the process, sharing with council some of the specific projects that have raised to the top through both analysis of how they'll compete in the process, as well as community interest that's been measured through a variety of means. And before we jump into this, I do want to just remind council and the community of the context within which TCC sits. So it is a state funding source that could provide upwards of $30 million of investment for our disadvantaged communities. That's an important investment, a big investment. But I think, as you'll see from this slide, thanks, Paul, for forwarding it there, that there are many other opportunities for revitalization that are also in front of us. I think we're in a unique time right now where we have those ARPA dollars. We're also uniquely situated with public safety vital services, tax measure dollars that we have $3 million in our budget specifically for community revitalization. And so you'll see from this chart, which Paul will speak to a little bit more in his presentation, there are many efforts going on right now within the city to work towards revitalization. TCC is one of those, but we want the community to know that we're pursuing opportunities through ARPA, through our CIP, through CDBG dollars, through PSVS dollars. It gives us an opportunity to both be competitive with things like TCC and have leverage matching funds that we wouldn't have had, you know, three years ago, as well as just move that work forward as a city, because it's one of the goals of the council, and it's a priority that we should be pursuing. And so we're going to continue to do that work outside of TCC, but well-aligned with TCC. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul Soldania, our Economic Community Development Director, to reflect a little bit on that point, and then provide this update on where we're at with TCC.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and give you this update. As the council knows, this process started in 2019, when the city was awarded a grant through the California Strategic Growth Council to fund this project and this continuation of a lot of planning and effort and work that has gone into revitalization of not just the downtown core, but the surrounding areas. As Mr. Clegg pointed out, revitalization has many opportunities for us, excuse me. And as you can see here, we see this as an opportunity to leverage a variety of different projects and opportunities that will come forth. And as I go through and highlight some of those, you'll start to see how those will interact with many of these programs and many of the investments that your council's already making in community revitalization. Before I get into the status of the plan, I do want to recognize and thank the organizations that are listed here, who have really worked diligently to help us engage the community throughout the process. And they've contributed to the successful completion of this phase of the process, and will be instrumental in helping us to go to the next level in terms of building our collaborative team and starting to implement these projects. I also want to thank and recognize the hundreds of residents who participated in this engagement process. As we started it through the midst of a pandemic, we had to readjust and go to online town hall meetings, if you will, and we had a lot of engagement in that process. And I also would like to recognize our economic development staff, who's here this evening. They have been putting in, along with other staff from throughout the department, a lot of work and effort in organizing the meetings and doing a lot of the outreach that I'll talk about. Just from a context standpoint, the focus area includes Bakersfield's downtown and portions of the historic neighborhoods to the east and the south, commonly known as Old Town Kern, Oleander Sunset, and Lakeview. There's over 83,000 residents that live within this focus area, and over 24,000 residents who commute daily to downtown for employment. This is a map that's in the plan. It just highlights the zoning that's within that area. And as you'll see in the, in the, some of the highlights of the plan, there's a lot of mixed uses in there. There's commercial, there's residential, but they're all segmented in a way that makes the planning effort very efficient, and the plan highlights that activity. As I mentioned, community empowerment and community-led change is the core of the TCC program. And the planning effort that we undertook over the last couple of years has been transparent in involving a number of residents and community leadership throughout that engagement process, particularly emphasis on the disadvantaged communities, and getting members of that community to participate and to give us their ideas and generate their, again, the resources that they bring to help us to achieve the efforts that we have before you. There are three primary areas that are outlined in the plan, and all of the projects are prioritized based on these three areas. They include equitable housing and neighborhood development, which really focuses on housing and transit-related services, workforce development and economic development, or economic opportunity, which focuses on local businesses, job training, and education related to building the capacity of residents and workers in that focus area. And the third area is mobility and urban greening. And this is a focus to encourage people to walk and bike and take mass transit throughout the target area. So you'll see that our, that the plan that the community developed is really focused in those areas. So the first area in these, again, this is the list of projects that are in the plan. This list of projects came from the development of the community process, as well as the consultants analyzing the projects on the basis of the criteria that would help achieve the highest funding scores for the TCC program. So in affordable housing rehabilitation, we've identified a number of projects there, including new development projects and infill support. These areas will not only be applicable to TCC, but are applicable to our affordable housing strategies and some of the activities we already have undergoing in the city. The next area is complete streets with transit bike and pedestrian and walkability improvements. You could see that there are a number of recommendations here, complete streets for 34th and MLK Boulevard, and then walkability improvements, safe routes to school, as well as improvements on Truxton, 19th, 23rd, 24th, and Golden State. And then the last area is wellness, urban greening, and transit services. And as you can see, there's a number of projects that are included here, the Community Garden Collaborative, Martin Luther King Park reimagining, as well as the extension of the Mill Creek Linear Park to the south. In terms of transit services, zero emission circulator bus that moves people throughout the core area, and some improvements to some of the other transit services that are available in the community. So in terms of the next steps for this process, this is the completion of the grant that we have received from the state to do this planning work. We plan on having one additional community forum, where the community will provide input into this, final input into this process, and then we will final, file the final report with the state on December 31st. Following that, we, the, as we've been saying, the work begins, especially for the community collaborative. We will be engaging them in developing that implementation process, which is an important part of us applying for the funding through the TCC process. This needs to be a community-driven and community collaboration, and our role will be to help to facilitate that and help them to champion these projects, as well as to work with them and work with the resources that the city has to deploy in those areas. I should mention, we, the other aspect of it is to take all of those projects that are on the list, plus the dozens more that are on the community-generated project list, and to help them become project-ready, meaning that they'll be ready to receive the funding once the funding arrives. The other areas that we need to work with the community collaborative on will include data and project benefit tracking. This is something that is required as part of the planning process, and so we want to make sure that we have a very strong system in place to where we can track the benefits and the opportunities that are coming with, with good data to report out with relationship to the impact that these projects have. Again, the community collaborative will be asked to develop a community engagement plan as we continue through the process of implementation, as well as a climate adaptation and resiliency plan in this particular area. And then, once all of this process is complete, we will be working with the collaborative on submitting for the funding, and as the city manager indicated, it could be up to $30 million, to fund the projects that are identified and that are determined to be project-ready. That round, right now, the, the public comment period for those guidelines was released on Monday, and we, actually, staff is participating in a workshop with the state on Friday to review those, those guidelines. And we anticipate that sometime after the first of the year, that process will open, and we'll be working with the community collaborative in submitting the application for that. So with, with that, I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Soldania. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Soldania, for your presentations tonight, and thank you for the work of your office. Thank you to your team. It's been wonderful working with them throughout the last year and a half or so on this project. I'm just excited that we're near the end of this process and about to submit an application. I can, I can feel, I can feel the, the sense of anticipation here as we submit. I think we're in a good position. You know, it was in 2017 when, I remember first having a conversation with city manager Alan Tandy about the possibility of us supplying for TCC funds, and then staff and myself going up to Sacramento to, to have conversations with Strategic Growth Council. And so it's, it's, it's exciting to finally be at this moment, and I want to thank you and your team. I also want to thank you all for participating in really deep community engagement work. I've had an opportunity, colleagues, to, to participate and hear directly from various different stakeholders and constituents in my ward and in Ward One as well. My colleague, Councilmember Arias, has been participating as well, and it's been really, it's been really fruitful and helpful to understand where they're coming from. There are a lot of needs within our neighborhoods, particularly in our older disadvantaged neighborhoods, infrastructure needs, but a lot of other issues that go beyond infrastructure. And I think it's, it was rightfully put that this one opportunity, this TCC grant alone, will not address all of the pressing issues that are facing our neighborhoods. But if we do it right, and if we're able to leverage all of these other opportunities, whether it be ARPA, or our measure N funds, or other grants, we can really see a transformative effect. And so I appreciate that, and I would just encourage us to continue to, even beyond this process, continue to engage our stakeholders and our community groups, you know, as we have been. I think those conversations are really important. And then finally, I had a question about just the process and the competitive nature of the process. We, we have the possibility of, you know, receiving up to 30, $35 million, but there are some ways in which we can make our application much more competitive, right? I'm wondering if you can speak to that. One, one area is that we, we are a city that has a high-speed rail station planned for our downtown, and those cities that develop TCC plans that incorporate the high-speed rail station are far more competitive. Can you confirm or argue against that point, if you will? Paul?
Yes, I can confirm that, that the, the presence of HSR is one of those factors that is considered in the evaluation process.
Thank you. And then the other piece is, just want to reiterate the importance of the matching dollars and the requirement versus, versus what is competitive. Could you talk to us about that as well, and what other cities have been able to do in terms of those matches, and what has been successful?
Sure, I'll talk about leverage in general, and I can defer to the city manager to address some experience in that area. In terms of the, the best or most competitive application, we want to make sure that we have as many projects in there that will leverage the investment of the TCC investment. And so that's why we've included not just the projects that I shared with you, but a number of projects that may not score as well in the submittal, but again, would be part of our roadmap for transformation and revitalization. And so to the extent that we are investing in all of those projects, all of those investments will help us to, to leverage in that application.
Thank you, Paul. And I would just add a couple of thoughts. First, First, one question that is, we're not able to answer today is whether or not ARPA funds will be considered as leverage. We believe that that will be the case in some early indications. But we're waiting to see these guidelines that will come out soon that can confirm that. That being the case, that puts us in a really good position because we have allocated a number of our funds to do affordable housing, you know, projects and other revitalization work with those dollars. Just a couple of examples that may be helpful. When you look at our presentation earlier today, and Chester and South H, and the walkability that those can offer with those complete street designs, those will be projects that we can leverage that are within the area that are consistent with the principles of TCC that demonstrate we're making our own commitments. We're putting our own dollars in. The street lighting project that we have is another one. Some of our affordable housing dollars through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund can be great leverage. And the TCC guidelines to date have been very permissive in what can count as leverage. So CDBG dollars and other capital improvement project dollars can be considered leverage. So I think we're in a very good position there. But again, largely because of the Public Safety Vital Services tax measure and some of our other recent efforts to, you know, focus on our capital improvement program and other programs are putting us in a good spot to be competitive with the leverage.
Councilmember Gonzalez, anything further?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Did you withdraw? Councilmember Arias.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be quick. My colleague asked all the questions that I was going to ask, so I didn't want to waste time. But I will take the opportunity to just thank Paul, your entire team, Cecilia. You guys have been incredible. I know, Paul, you kind of came on in the middle of the process. So did I. But we've been able to work together, I think, work through some of the challenges that we've seen. We have done community engagement in an exceptional way during a pandemic. And I think that's an important point that we need to lift up. The work that you guys do, community engagement is never easy. But given the circumstances, you know, I think, you know, you guys deserve an incredible round of applause for all the work that you do. And I know we're barely in the middle of it. It seems like we're kind of getting to a point where we're going to, you know, finally be able to submit an application. But as Troy Hightower would say, you know, the work's just about to begin. So I also want to say thank you to Rick Anthony, who I think came on and within the first couple of weeks, maybe a month, was able to get the MLK Park Reimagining Project onto the list. I'm so excited that he brought that idea forward. And it was actually one of the more popular ideas amongst the community. And again, just want to say thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias.
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Soldania and your team. It was good to see so many community members come out to the different workshops. Appreciate your efforts. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Item 13A under New Business. Resolution setting the dates of the regular, oh, I apologize. It's items, yeah, no. It is 13A. Resolution setting the dates of the regular city council meetings, budget hearings, and department budget presentation for calendar year 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few highlight comments. This council meeting calendar is reflective of the pattern that we have had in past years and recent years. A couple of unique elements. We have some hearing dates in February that necessitate holding our second meeting a little bit later than, one week later than we typically would. But we're taking the opportunity to identify that as a regular meeting, but that will be focused on the topic of redistricting. It's within that timeframe that we're going to have information for a council and community to react to on that topic. And then just in general, locking in our meeting dates on the topic of redistricting will allow us to put out our schedule for when there will be public hearings, what we anticipate, one at one of the regular meetings in January, February, and March, each of those months. And then there's a unique circumstance in September where the League of Cities meeting and Labor Day are in the same week and our council meeting would have regularly been smashed right between those two. And that didn't seem like a good idea. So we moved it one week earlier. And that also allows us to create some space between our July meeting and our first meeting in August as we typically have a little bit of a break there in those summer months. Beyond that, I think the schedule looks pretty typical to past years and it is before council for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Colleagues, any comments?
Motion to move staff's recommendation.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, at the end of the California Economic Summit, it was announced that the summit is coming to Bakersfield in 2022. And so I just want to lift up the Chamber of Commerce and Nick Ortiz, the mayor, for all the efforts made to bringing the summit here to Bakersfield. But I think this is really an opportunity for us to shine. This will be our Olympic moment. And I think that we need to, we need to treat it like, like a host committee would and begin working on addressing some of our cosmetic issues, some, you know, sprucing up of our downtown streets, getting on some of the projects that we have queued up for the convention center, make some enhancements there. But really making sure that we, we shine during the summit. You know, there, there will be industry leaders from throughout the state, civic leaders from throughout the, the state here in this community during this conference. And it's important that we, we make ourselves look really, really good. And so just like to ask staff to begin working on that list of things that we can accomplish within the next 12 months in advance of that summit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of referrals. First one, will staff please look into the sign height limits on Highway 99 in Hosking? And make sure it is 75 feet for the rest of that corridor, what we've done in the past along the 99, which has been 75 feet. But the city continues to grow and we stopped at White Lane. So we continue to go south. But whenever we did our ordinances, we stopped at White Lane. I'd like to see it continue further south. Next one is, so we had risks come before us. They made a recommendation that we potentially look at our charter, the IACP, International Chiefs, International Association Chiefs of Police, when we contracted with them to take a look at better practices for the police department. They came back with a recommendation that we look at some charter reform along with the California DOJ recommendation. So I think it's high time that we take a look at the bylaws for the city of Bakersfield. It's not the constitution against the bylaws that govern our city that really haven't been looked at in 100 years. And I would like staff to come back and talk about some other cities have done in this area. And they formed a committee. So it relieves the, the council from, you know, really digging down deep initially. It allows the committee to go into certain areas and bring, you know, potential recommendations to the council. But I'd like staff to come back and just talk to us about how that could possibly be built. The last thing is the Mazda dealership in Ward Seven, out in Autumn Mall. They're reopening tomorrow and they're going to have a gala. And if anybody wants to come by the new Mazda dealership in Ward Seven and buy a car, you're welcome to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Anyone else? Seeing none, we stand adjourned at 6:35.